Gas tax tonight, comprehensive plan update, growth policy, wayfinding. We're gonna push the recording and archiving meeting, Jason's out. I'm on vacation this week, so we're gonna push that. Carol, another work session. If we have time tonight, we're gonna talk about trash, trash collection. But depending on how long the first four go, we may or may not do the trash.
Can we go ahead and say that we'll be doing the recording and archiving at the next work session?
Yeah.
Pending Jason's availability?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So with that, we start with gas, tax spending, maybe you're on.
Let's see. So I think it was the last work session. There was a brief discussion, I think Councilwoman Bartlett was asking a question about projects. And my understanding is she was probably talking to Gary after the theme meeting about it. So we may not have to spend a lot of time on this, but we had told you we would come back at this work session about this. And so I think the question was really about how do projects get selected? And there was a reference to talking about gas tax. So engineering put together the top four projects in mind from a need perspective, in terms of the condition of the road, okay, so it's not factoring in how many cars are on the road, or economic development, you know, factors and that type of thing. But just in terms of the deterioration of the road. So Bowers Road is up here, Madison Boulevard repainting, and this is Madison Boulevard, West Sullivan Street, and then Jet Park Circle. And I have another slide that's gonna talk about the different gas tax streams that we get. But for the 2019 gas tax, which is what it's called, we get about $200,000. And so engineering came up with these four projects that we cost approximately $200,000. Now, these projects can be funded from other revenue streams. It doesn't have to be the 2019 gas tax. And because we're gonna be coming into a budget cycle, part of what engineering will be doing is putting together their recommendations for spending, you know, on-road projects and other projects. And so you're gonna see this again, but again, we've been trying to be responsive to the question you had last time. These are the projects. Since they had, they basically go out and systematically review all of the roads, and that's how they determine, based upon how much pavement is left and that type of thing. So when they originally did Bowers, they thought, or looked at Bowers, they thought the $200,000 would cover it all. However, there's been subsequent deterioration. So they're thinking that there'll probably be additional funds needed to even take care of Bowers Road. The Madison Boulevard, the second Madison Boulevard, $200,000 would cover that piece. The third Madison Boulevard is from production over town in mine, and the $200,000 would only cover about 25% of that house. And then Jet Park Circle is really dire need, but it wouldn't require the full $200,000. And so they think that they could also do Westover Circle, which is off of Arlington, and do those two at the same time. These are the four projects just to organize. So you've got the Bowers Road from Powell to Council Drunks Ferry was the first project. Again, that road's in pretty bad shape. Items two and three are showing you the Madison Boulevard sections. And if you've been out of that portion of Madison Boulevard, you know, we are repaving portions of it, right, related to the Westchester Road and then...
And that was in this year, but...
That's right. And then number four, you can see the Jet Park Circle and the Westover Circle. Any questions about the projects? Or how, you know, again, we're gonna be having more discussions about this.
So we've got to do a resolution next month that allocates more than... Roger Hickson said today, my estimate now that estimated number is like 265. So we're a little over 300.
That's good.
I definitely attest to Jet Park Circle.
That's for sure, in fact.
Yeah.
But so is Bowers.
What, what does community said that Bowers is gonna take more than the 200K? How much more?
They, I asked that question. I was talking with Gary and Michelle, and they don't know yet until they actually get out there and measure what kind of pavement thickness is there. They're, even though Bowers doesn't get a lot of traffic, they're concerned if it goes too much longer, they're gonna have to completely redo the whole road.
Yes, the side of the road.
Yeah, so to get out and pave it before it's totally shot, it may not cost as much money, even though, you know, Madison Boulevard and Jet Park, in my mind, are much more important from a need. And all of them are discussing, those taking care of it. It's not to say that those road segments can't be addressed with other funding. Right, we're just talking about this one gas tax.
I was on Madison Boulevard by where they're doing the, Madison Utilities is doing their work. And they are repaving at least a portion of that currently.
Correct, so the segments that we've identified are the segments on either side of that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So just briefly, in terms of, and you'll see this, especially with any council members, we do some funding budget. The revenue sources that we typically use for road projects, we've got several different gas tax, gas taxes that have been improved over the years. We have earmark sales tax to be able to pay in. And then we have franchise fees that we use for some road projects. And of course, there's always one-time revenue, or sometimes there's one-time revenue, whether it's Aldo funding or bond funds. So we're using bond funds for Sullivan and Hues Road, for example. Aldo, we're getting money from Aldo to do the restriking on Waltriana and the rapid stride for Town Madison. So it's not necessarily just general fund monies that go to local road projects. But this gives you a sense of the different sources of funds. And so when engineering is putting together their recommended budget, they're looking at all possibilities, the federal funds, and then looking at the road need, and they'll make the recommendations to them. And then just in terms of the gas tax fund specifically, the slide just gave you a breakdown. This was for fiscal year '20 of how those monies, so about 37% of the gas tax fund are actually going to the road repair. We pay for utilities and streetlights out of these monies, right-of-way molly. Signal improvements, not full-on traffic signals, but adjustments to signals and in some way.
So that's how we position right now as we're going to do the budget.
Right, so those four projects are, I would say, probably are gonna be engineering's top projects that we got. And then we'll look at the total amount of funds that are expected. And, you know, we may add projects, we may not go for additional funding. Any other questions besides this one? Moving on. You ready to move on, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have a follow-up, a couple of months ago, we talked about the comprehensive plan. This slide we use, is the same slide, basically different colors, of what we talked about before in terms of the work effort components of a comp plan update, in terms of what we're gonna update, conditions, visioning, future land use plan, traffic plans, traffic counts, updating the traffic plan and so forth. And then schedule factors, which led us to conclude that we really didn't wanna start this project at the end of this year, we need next year. Really stemmed from COVID, the fact that we don't have the same number of cars on the road, Mazda Toyota, you know, needs to be up and operational. We've got two schools that are gonna change the traffic patterns on the roads, and of course census data is in the way. And so those were all the factors that led us to decide to, if you wanna pursue this, to not start a program this year. So we issued the RFP for this. We received two proposals. And then we carry a presentation in here, leaving those funds at the end of July. And then hopefully making a selection and including those funds. And we'll circle back with council on that. Obviously, the plan had been, if you decided you wanna move forward with this, to include it in next year's budget, approve the contract in after October 1st. And then the work would kind of kick off in November. Really, the public outreach piece wouldn't be started until 2023. In terms of the two proposals that we received, the cost range was about $240,000 to $300,000. That includes contingency budget, includes at least a 10% contingency budget. So the low bid without contingency, including all the scope of work, is $215,000, which is a very reasonable price.
I keep running to like contingency wise on a study like that, like what?
Well, I would want to include at least a 10% contingency. I'd be happy with a 15%.
I said, no, like what was the stumbling block?
So the reason that you end up using contingency typically is for more public outreach. And, you know, if you end up doing more workshops, more stakeholder interviews.
I got you, yeah.
And then the other piece where I think it may come into play is related to traffic, you know, doing the traffic analysis and that type of thing. So, you know, I'm not gonna get too far into the weeds on the proposals, but some of the things that, you know, staff would end up probably taking more direct role and would be the goal projections. It's pretty hard for a consultant to come in and do those specific projections. They will do that, and there's the whole works included, so they rely upon a lot of our data. And the traffic counts, we have the determinative, the city will end up doing the traffic counts or we'll have to consult and do the traffic counts. So we'll be taking a look at that from a cost perspective, and, you know, just staff will be able to do that. One of the things you wanna do with traffic counts is try to get a model around the same time. And so there's just the thing you've got there in the data. So we'll, you know, that's the thing to tell that we need to explore. But traffic modeling is gonna potentially be not an issue, but we had originally issued RFP wanting the consultants to do a full model. And I heard back from consultants that was gonna be problematic, because not as many people adapt the area of the model and so forth. So I think we're kind of working through that. But that may be something that ends up, I think, eating some of our budgets out, though enough money isn't still in contracts for that. So that's where we are in the top part.
We know what we're gonna get the census data information about.
So we're supposed to get the census data related to the release in September. It's supposed to hit release in August, if it's approved at the end of August, then it has September. So then it actually is useful, September. All of the other data, you know, it comes out in the history graph. So we probably need, it usually takes two years.
Sure. And we'll look at using that same company we used in 2010. I can't remember.
Water and Associates, yes. And you've already approved that contract.
Okay, okay.
So it's just sort of sitting, waiting, waiting. And that's really the question, you know, because of the release of the data, you know, that district effort will be kind of going on while this firm is doing the background work, but they're really not doing it.
Okay. I just agree to get the most accurate census information for projection.
In terms of the demographic information that we're using for the comp plan, that would probably get released in spring of 2022. Because it's usually about a two-year delay. Or you edit maybe a little longer, so. So again, after we interview the firms at the end of July, July break, we're doing that. We'll circle back with council and let you know, you know, if you like the firms, if we wanna be a part of that, and then we should go forward. Any questions?
Maybe you know this, Chris.
Well, just the presentation, thank you.
So when you interview in July, like what is gonna be, what are the main things you're gonna look for? Is it gonna be the side factors?
Yeah, so the firms will give a presentation. And then, you know, we'll look to evaluate, see, you know, did they meet all the requirements of the RFP? Right, so you have an RFP that we sent out. And then it's really gonna be work, looking to see, I think, the interviewing process and determine, will they be a good fit for the community, right? Are they gonna cover, be able to achieve what, you know, they, the council wants to achieve? You know, be communicators, you know, be able to do the technical detail, be able to present information in a way that the public can understand, be able to produce a quality product. And so, those are some of the highlights of what we've been looking at. But, you know, it all comes back to, you know, that RFP, and making sure that they provide the deliverables. It's not necessarily the lowest price wins. Obviously, they're not gonna waste money, but we need to be a responsive and responsible proposal that'll do the job.
I see how they engage the community too, the ideas that they've had, the success that they've had, and how it compares with the community on the opposite end.
Both of these firms have a tremendous amount of experience with comp plans. And so I think we've got two good firms to select from and to do it from.
Any other questions? Growth policy changes.
You all put this on, so I, I'm not sure, I didn't really prepare anything other than, I do have the full road policy up here. This is, these first set policies are related to property that's already in the city limits. Policies settings for property that is not in the city limits. And then, again, not knowing where we wanted to go with this conversation, I do have the current city limit map. So all of the white area is the area that's been happening, unincorporated area. So again, I'm not sure what we wanted to do, so.
I don't, I, you know, I feel like kind of the game's changed a little bit. And you may tell me where I'm wrong, but I feel like beforehand and for previous years when we've been here, we felt like we could control growth by not annexing. And we said, well, we're just gonna annex and they're gonna build houses. And that was kind of the case for several years. Now it looks like they're going, you know what? We don't care if you annex or not, we're still gonna build whatever we wanna build. And if it's right in the middle of your town, we don't care. So that's still, it saves the schools, but then it puts a huge drain, could put a drain on our fire police roads on down roads. So I guess, that being said, you just sit back and go, well, we're still not gonna annex anything because we don't wanna put any new kids in the school at the detriment of all the other things? Or do you say, now we need to change this and go to a middle ground? What does that look like? Will you annex it so we can't get trouble? Does we don't have a lot of comfort fields scattered all throughout our whole community? Or whatever that is, I don't know. But the game's changed now, that we can't control growth. We can control our student population in schools. That's not maybe the best overall thought process for the whole city. So I'll have an answer. I'm just, all I know is now they've changed the rules, and here we all are trying to make decisions, so.
Well, along the lines, and I'm sorry, what you...
Yeah, yeah.
What he was just saying is, a perfect example is Freeland is now doing its Phase Five of Cedar Acres?
Nature Trail.
Nature's Trail. So it is just one road parallel to the last road that is within the city limits. All of those houses are gonna be funneling through the subdivision and through the roads that are within the city limits to get to wherever they work. So we need to ask the question, is it worthwhile to have those families paying taxes within our city limits so that we can support our roads and our infrastructure? Or is that going to be the straw that break camel's back for our schools? Which we all, we all know we want to protect our schools. That's not a question. It's just what is the best way to go about finding that balance? And honestly, having been on the school board, you know, where my number one priority was always protect the schools, protect the schools, protect the schools, now seeing it from a different perspective, I can see more and understand more why it was so hard to say no. And I can also understand that there are many other factors besides the schools. Have, number one priority is still schools, schools still have my heart. But we have to be practical here. And so we need to seriously consider what is best on all accounts and balance that somehow.
And it seems like we've been doing it on a case-by-case scenario for the last two or three years, but it would be great to have a defined plan moving forward of what we are all in, of what we want Madison to look like when it grows up.
I hope that if you have a defined plan, I think it's moving, I think it's a moving topic. I think...
Hope for... Hope for growing up.
I mean, you know, the city's growth is going to be, and the fact that you've got, you know, also...
I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. No, you go.
I was gonna say, I mean, it is a dynamic situation, especially when you've got that much unincorporated land. But frankly, even for cities that are more developed, you don't need redevelopment. You know, when the economy is strong, you get people who are practically cared out and they build for you. And so change is constant. And, and so it is a balancing act. We need to kind of grapple with in terms of, you know, road impacts, school impacts, which isn't your problem, but yet is very much an important concern for the city. So it's, it's a tough one. I think the, you know, aside from the revenue piece, you know, one of the, and Greg sort of related to this, but one of the things that concerns us is just being able to control the quality in what actually gets built in unincorporated area. Because, because of the hot, hot nature, the patchwork here on the west side, and choices that we made, you know, we've got really nice neighborhoods in the next unincorporated area and no control to protect those property developers and the stores. Now, the odds are, you know, it's probably residential, it might not be too horrendous, but we don't know and we don't control that. And so that, you know, that worries us, I think, in playing from a compatibility standpoint and from maintaining quality standpoint. Certainly revenue is important, but that's another factor. And so where you cross that line and what you let come in, given the trade-offs that you, you know, you don't make, it's a tough one. The other thing I would add is, you know, taking the Nature's Trail that I mentioned, similar to Morris State and Saddle Acres, you know, we would focus back that over time, those lots are gonna be trying to annex and re-need a time. So it may be that you're going to end up hitting that property tax revenue. You're gonna miss out on the initial construction sales tax revenue from maybe getting built. And you might miss out on X number of years, whatever it takes then before the kids go to the after, before you get the property tax revenue. So, you know, it may be that those properties are coming to the city at some point, if you decide to annex and you're, you have the discretion, right? You don't even have to annex a single one, not if you don't want to. But, so the revenue income, it's just a question of when. But again, we still don't get to control that quality of development, against the development. You know, what all gets built, making sure the roads are built to our standards. You know, Copperfield is a great example. There's not one single technical person that would, you know, downstairs in my levels that would want to annex that, that development unit because of the way it was constructed. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough, tough decision.
Want the information again? Um, the comprehensive plan give us a lot more knowledge, because it's too light in the air. With the traffic...
I'm not gonna concern with that, is wait until the spring of 2023. I mean, there's so much, there'll be so many moving parts between now. I mean, I may be wrong, I ain't sure we gotta make a decision tonight, but I think that that will absolutely help. But I think, how many things are we gonna kick the can down the road for almost two years?
Yeah. I think that, you know, we went through a very detailed...
Got you.
You're turning like a girl on this one.
She's just...
Yeah. Yeah, see, it was, it was a good point, what you just said.
I'm gonna pass a note up to the teacher. No, I mean, two years, that's a lot of development without any trouble. I mean, case in play, right, lots of buildings, a lot of apartments. Whereas, I mean, the residential never hit it in one thing, but a lot of apartments, that's a lot of trips. A lot of, a lot of, a road that doesn't go. And, you know, just like other roads, and they're gonna check in many driver boxes as they enter the city limits. But what we designed, what we planned for that, and quite frankly, our growth policy said we ain't giving our full, and she got, I mean, she was, and that would be a perfect example. You know, we'll use something like that to, not necessarily just limit the growth, but rewarding an additional quality there that could help paper, that could help offset that cost. And also they have road work, so if they gotta do it right now, they could stick a two-lane road and walk along it.
I didn't realize soft ones in the garden.
And to, I guess, answer the firm's question about more modeled, I think that, you know, we went through a very detailed study group with the committee. And so we have an understanding of what they could be developing, you know, what their opportunities are. And what you gain with the comp plan, I mean, I think it's important to do. You're certainly gonna have an opportunity to get more input from the community, or more recent input, right? So last week after the cutbacks, we found out with the growth. And so you're going to be able to talk about vision, and you're hopefully be able to talk about deserving land on the west side, a park, and we need a large park out there. But, and you're going to get current market information, right? But I don't, I don't think any of that changes the fundamental fact that west side is attractive for residential development, right? It becomes a question of, you know, density and type of development. And we went through that exercise with the Westside Master Plan, which identified, you know, certain types of residential products out there for different reasons. I think that some of the policy choices, because people may be different now. But, so I'm not sure, there will be knowledge gains. It, it's more an opportunity to kind of rehash what we've already talked about a couple of different times in 2016, Real Site Master Plan, and then with the growth policy in 2017 and 2018. And that's okay, I mean, again, it's a dynamic situation. But it will take a lot, it won't be in book for 2023.
Do you see any large subdivisions coming, approaching you in the process of a planning commission or anything like that?
Well, one of the subdivisions, not yet. But one of the things that we are seeing, we talked about this with the growth committee, is that just because you shut down west side development quickly, it doesn't mean that growth is gonna stop. And so, you know, for example, the Lindemere project on the east side was off a sheltered road that they turned and supported, right? That project came forward. We, we had expected that project to develop, we instituted our growth projections, but we didn't think that would happen until 2025. And, you know, we started now. Royal Drive, we had a townhouse project come through, and we've got another one. Those properties are really expensive to develop because of footprint constraints on them. Those are properties that, again, that we wouldn't have expected to see develop for, you know, fifteen or some years down the road. But the economics have changed, right? People can get tired of a mass, or units, but either selling or renting. And so it's maybe in fact that if you have a developer that is tired, it works out, right? The pro, programs work out. And so we're, again, we're seeing properties come forward that just were not expected, you know, to have happen. And then, you know, all the developers know the score on the west side. And so, you know, you've seen car nets crossing, you know, that would come through. Those are properties that were already in the city. You know, since the growth policy, we have not annexed any sizable project, right? They've done all single-family lots, or hasn't gained any, and it's not true. And the developers know, you know, unless they're coming with something really, really good, what's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it.
Look, when you're talking about Nature's Trail and this whole bunch of working subdivisions, when you know, we don't do that. That is a net negative. All we're running in is houses, it will not pay for roads. I don't care how happy you are about controlling whatsoever, it's a net negative. It will not pay for the fire with leasing roads, and we know that unless we change something about how we generate revenue.
Exactly.
And we should service those people.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, I think, um, do you want to share your?
There's a requirement to provide police, fire, or other services outside of the city limits.
Oh, we did, oh, we did.
Well, we, what, I'm not aware of any major substantial services that are provided outside of the city limits in terms of police and fire.
There are some minor agreements for fire service outside of the city. As utilities does provide service outside of the city, uh, based on a few conditions in their articles of incorporation. So one of those conditions is that another government utility or another government entity asks Madison Utilities to service the development of outside the city. So that's the change that was made to their articles back in two thousand and six. And so that provides a way for certain people to get utility service if they're outside the city limits. But otherwise, state goal is not provide any obligation on the city to provide any type of service outside of the city limits. And Madison County is one of, I think, the only counties in the state that has not had any police jurisdiction. And so even if the city had a police jurisdiction, it would not be required to provide services out there. Because the point of having the jurisdiction is to be able to impose fees for services. And so, yeah, that's, that's the deal.
I mean, we just talked at the beginning about the two hundred thousand dollars and stuff, and we're already spending on those that already exist. So we're really gonna come up with money for these growth activities that we're gonna ask to make bigger, because we've got people from.
So you can put that on the, as the. You put the, you put, so you see the, the left or the right hand turn lines that we're going to, and the winding the road at the, at the entrance of the, the developer's segment. As they put that in, they're required to do that, that's part of our recommendation.
But we've got long term limits, or they're growth on the spur.
Another thing we can think about, really, is that Brownsbury Road is gonna be sidelined all the way out to sixty-five. We, as a city, we impose a setback, a commercial setback on County Line Road, which preserves the commercial corridor all the way down to County Line Road. We could do the same thing on Brownsbury Road, which would bring in Marshall, and help us offset some of the residential that's going in out there. I know that that area is primarily gonna be focused on residential, but we do have an opportunity all the way down Brownsbury Road. All of Huntsville in that area has commercial property that is frontaged Brownsbury Road. So, I mean, that's an option, that's something that we should discuss and look at.
Okay. I like that information, man, I, I, I'm honestly good for it. Um, and also, I'd like to ask, you know, this happened later, when was that done for County Line Road? What, what year was that?
I don't know, Steve Keraway was talking with me about it, so I'm sure I could talk to him about it, he would do. But I talked to John Merritt specifically about Huntsville and that Brownsbury Road. And he says they have commercial frontage on Brownsbury Road, that's their plan. Any residential is supposed to be set back. But, I mean, it's gonna be a five line road.
Right. I bet they won't push residential, they'll just push commercial. They don't want to bus students all the way down, so.
They've got commercial all the way down Holiday, so it makes sense to continue it on any of their other property they have on Brownsbury.
Well, the Village Open Springs, which is the orange square there, but they turned it to Holiday.
And it has commercial.
It does, and, you know, they, they plan for more commercial along that frontage. So in West Side Master Plan, um, you know, it was acknowledged that that would be a commercial over there. It's not the same thing, you have a commercial on the other parcels, on the other sides of it. But that is looking to be the, the very good infrastructure, commercial development.
Right.
I'm just like the intersection, like, I'm running the west, it's where the public is.
But, there's not, there's still, there's one gas station out there, that's a Chevron that's further west. But, um, but that would be an opportunity somewhere along that front porch or to put a gas station, I G A, something along those lines out there. And it's just, it, that needs to be part of our discussion as we're going on. Where is there an opportunity for commercial growth in that area? I mean, it is largely, largely residential, but there are opportunities.
Sure, of course. And, and we do look at that, if we've got any kind of development, kind of, for, uh, material, um, a major road to, to look at, see what we want to sense. You know, from a, the staff isn't in a position of advocating, you know, you annexing all of that wavelength at all. And, but, yeah, we do think that there, you'll probably see strategic annexations, right, which is what the growth policy talks about. But we do know that there are parcels that are in between three and ten acres or twelve acres, where it might make sense, you know, to bring these in. And it is, it's always hard to have a blueprint of policy, right? Because there's always going to be exceptions where, you know, maybe it makes sense to consider it. You know, it, you know, you may wanna look at some of the, you know, you've got a growth policy, whether or not we wanna change it. I do think that the growth policy is achieving the objectives that, um, you know, council wanted in terms of the face of development. Kind of slowing it down. And so, but you're gonna have these situations where you've got these unincorporated pockets, where somebody might propose an apartment project, or, or something like that, and that's, you may just have to grapple with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we have to look at this as some cities, some cities that have success in this. And, and one that comes to mind, Nader, is, is Homewood. They're in the middle of Birmingham, and they have pockets, they have good pockets, they have bad pockets. When I say bad pockets, it's pockets of work, you know, not built to their standard, or a, a large, large amount of apartments. But if we continue to annex stuff in, try to control it, which I think the whole reason from just a little bit of history, you know, from before, when we came in, we absolutely thought we were gonna be able to control roads by putting these policies in place. And we did it with, with the intent that it worked, and it has worked. It did exactly what we wanted it to do. You know, builders are now not gonna build the same house, and they're gonna move out somewhere else and build. So to control roads, I mean, you know, I still think that strategic growth plan we had is still valid. The, the theory of what we're trying to do, does it need to be tweaked? Probably. But I can tell you, not everybody is sitting at these tables right now. I'll be here in four years, and the next group will struggle on the same thing. And do we, you know, do we have enough foresight to put something in place that constraints this, but gives staff enough liberty to go to, to the next council? Go, hey, guys, you know, they got it wrong, or hey, they got it right? So, as far as coming up with something concrete, I just, I don't think we can, I don't think we'll ever be able to.
No, really, I think we gotta.
But I do think we need to tweak it, and I think we need to stick with our plan of strategic growth. We, everybody at this table that I can remember ran on strategic growth. Now, the question is, what is that? You know, because when we, when, when Greg and I've had this conversation probably a hundred times, you know, his idea of strategic growth and mine are completely different from yours or hers or his. And so, and, and, and not to say that, that I'm right or you're right, or we don't know. So, I'm just, I'm concerned, my, I would be concerned of pulling stuff in just for the sake of, of saving the roads. Because there are, I mean, there are houses in our area that are not as aesthetically, you know, beautiful as houses in another area where they're brand new homes. But with that said, somebody loves that house. They love it even because they can afford it, they love it because it's an older house, you know, whatever the case may be. So, I, I would just be, I, I think I would wanna take it, not so, not so much wait two years, right? I don't wanna do that, we have to make a decision with the information we have. But I think we need to, you know, figure out what is strategic growth to this group, because it's gonna be different to the next group.
I don't know, it's critical to have strategic growth with your schools and with your utilities.
Correct.
Those are probably the first two discussions that we need to have.
I think so.
Understanding, you know, kind of what they're thinking at that point. Obviously, from a school standpoint, we all lean on growth, we put a growth policy in place to manage it. What, what flexibility, if any, do we have to keep it where it is, to keep it what we're playing for?
So this, this is what policy said, and this talks about strategic annexations, that's really what we're talking about. It's a strategic annexation, which is defined as an annexation that results in meaningful increase in commercial land inventory, preserves city feasibility, connects other potential commercial land, or includes property that will be obviously suitable for public facilities such as schools, critical infrastructure, fire stations, et cetera. I don't know that that, you know, I would change that definition of strategic. I think that, um, you know, using the apartment project that you all have in terms of, you know, the expectations. You know, the thing that pains me with that particular project is that it's on good commercial front of those, right? And I will say, apartment developers don't like the misuse, right? It's not what they do, they do apartment projects and, and require them to include a commercial component. It really complicates their world, so they generally don't wanna do it. Um, but that property would have one where we would wanted to try and get something like that, right? And, you know, we get calls pretty frequently about apartment projects, and, you know, we have them, unless it's our growth policies not wanting to go forward. So that's one where they didn't reach out to us, by the way, but, um, they probably were aware of policies, and they were not even going to attempt it. Had they reached out to us and talked to us about this site, we'd say, well, if you included some commercial development, you know, maybe we could get some quarter. They're the same, you know, but they have an apartment project on Slaughter Road, you may have seen it. It's kind of like the north end of Slaughter, it's the same thing, same.
Is it too late to reach out to that owner and encourage him to go in a different direction, do you think, since he's not, you know, turned his shovel to dirt? Is, is there anything that we can offer as a city to say, hey, instead of doing this project, if you look at commercial and with tax abatements and?
I don't know that you, you wanna do that, but, um, I, I.
I love this stuff. Any way we can stop the train of the apartments?
And, you know, the other thing is, we see plans all the time, they don't end up being built. But, um, you know, given that they build on Slaughter, I'm assuming they have that, you know. So I guess, coming back with the strategic, you know, what's strategic? You know, I think that we crafted a pretty good definition that, um, it can fit in between, um, the three acres is kind of a, you know, we selected three acres because Ags only requires three acres to be a half. You know, there have been a number, we've had a handful of properties that are small properties that, you know, are surrounded by Madison. You know, it's eight acre property, somebody wants to separate, it just makes sense to, you know, control what happens. And so the three acres proved to be a pain for those situations, and we just tell them, no, you know, we're not gonna, we're always trying to look forward to requesting some eight acres to separate. We don't say that. From a legal perspective, you know, we cannot, we can't tell them that it's, you know, it's, it's done before we started. But we, we disperse them. So I, I, again, I don't know how, you know, if you wanna change strategic, how you would do that. It's not really what that definition is. Uh, no, from my, from an economic development perspective, I'd like to be able to see, you know, us annexing anything that's on the arterial. Because, you know, what goes on that arterial, um, is really important. I mean, with the quality of life and these little pockets that are embedded in the single family subdivisions, this is important too, for the quality of life. From a revenue perspective, and, you know, getting that commercial development, controlling what happens.
Can we go pursue those?
I'm sorry?
Can we pursue some of those, others, like when they come in?
Well, you know.
Talking to Steve about, is that going north on, um, on Washer Hand and Call from where quickly informed all those residential houses are for sale?
Yeah.
Commercial, I mean, they, they even work.
I've, I've had lots of conversations about this, I mean, so.
Did you jump? I mean, is it worth pursuing?
Um.
I guess jump.
There's, there's not a lot of easy access, a long, long term.
They're all, in areas, they're almost all relatively safe.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And where is there? It's on, it's on Walter, and then it's like, I was.
Oh, I'm gonna try to say.
But, is it, I, I don't like, because I know there's some areas where it's like, gee, we'd love for that to become.
Yeah, they're, they're not really, I don't know that they're doing that.
Yeah.
So you get some commercial development, it's just a question of, you know, the local sales tax producing commercial development, because that's all gonna locate the farm. So you get, you know, real estate office, and you get those things which are, you know, again, they contribute to property tax, and they create jobs for people. And so that's all really good, um, but, you know, you gotta do those things with everything, for quite some time. Some of the lots are developed, but most of them.
How many of those? I mean, lots are out there, there's some are the ones where the apartments are coming in on, on Baltimore. And, and when I say that, say, pick a line, right? You know.
You know, apartments are gonna wanna locate on a, a major collector material. You know, when I look at that, um, you know, I, there is at least, you know, five different areas where somebody would be happy to build a apartment property. There's one site in particular that we get questions about all the time.
I think we lost it that combined, that, were those the blocks?
It's seven acres.
Then one thing alone, or?
No, there's, there's multiple, there's multiple blocks, there's only three or four blocks.
Let's go buy one in the city and block it all, play a mole, and they will own it and block it.
It's like a monopoly game.
I don't know if that's a.
It's eleven acres, I think, is it Baltimore, I think that's eleven acres.
If we know that's on shipwrecked, go buy it and. Go buy the piece of property, go buy one of the four.
That is a decision that counts a good night.
Well, we can do what now?
That's a decision to all of us, maybe.
Huh? There's, it's, it's.
That would be, yes, that would involve negotiations.
I mean, he, Bill is smarter than I am, I swear. I mean, we don't have to be a victim all the time.
Right, you're right, but, yeah. Well, you know, there, there was a property that was coming on the market, um, where in West Side Master Plan it was identified as being Corvina Park. And when we learned that it was, you know, somebody was wanting to build it, we, you know, talked with council at the time, a different council, about, you know, sure, we'd be nice to buy this park, this property. And the city, it was in a different financial situation, you know? We were right in the midst of, you know, ballpark and taking out other big pots, and so it wasn't something council wanted to pursue. That was four acres of flat land that just slayed us as staff that we didn't do. Because it was in the master plan, and, you know, we just, you know, and there's houses on it, you know, the subdivision got it moved down now. So, um, I think that there are properties that are we're spending money on, um, if we're going to achieve, you know, really good public purpose. I think, you know, um.
Well, it's gotta be value added, right?
Sure.
Anything that we do, what we decided to add, has to be value added thing, or we're gonna.
Sure, but what's, what's value means, is it dollars?
They're very strong.
And some of this is in federal money, we can use to buy property, especially for water. So we might be able to work hand in glove with somebody like Madison Utilities to strategically annex certain properties if we are seriously looking at that. But that would be an executive session, discussion, that would be an open meeting discussion.
I mean, I, I think it's, you know, you, are you gonna know the property?
I'm sorry?
Would you know what properties are valued at, for parks or?
Well, sure, I mean, I mean, in talking with, you know, at for parks, you know, obviously with Cory, I mean, I kind of generally know what he's interested in. And, you know, I've talked to, you know, the fire department, the parks department, that is, opportunities may come up, you know. You know, I'm always thinking about it, if you hear about property, is that something that could serve a purpose, right? So, I've gathered, you know, a property owner out there who I've already talked with about a fire station location, right? And so if they move forward, you know, we might get two acres of their site. You know, so I'm, I'll say always working that piece of it, um, just to, you know, at least. So I'm, I'll say always working that piece of it, um, just to, you know, at least let them know this is what our expectation is, or we're interested in this location that they're. And so in all of this, you know, all of us, you know, Gary does that, we're an engineer, we're a student, and we're trying to get, reclaim property. So it's just, well, we're looking for opportunities.
I, I can hear, I just can't see.
I'm sorry?
He said you can't hear, I can't, I just can't see. But I'm, I just, again, I, I think we still need to define what we, what this group thinks is strategic, because it's, it's gonna change.
Well, that one's pretty much commercial properties, right? That one's pretty much commercial property, is that that part of your idea?
Well, for strategic, it was, it was commercial and it was public infrastructure, whether it be parks or a fire station or school, right? Not necessarily city infrastructure, but, um, strategic was those categories.
I mean, I know it's talking and bringing in mortgage out for residential and stuff like that, right?
No, but I think that that comes with it. So for example, if we're trying to negotiate school acreage, right? That's gonna come with homes, make no mistake about it.
True.
Right?
Exactly, so, but, you know.
But it could be worth it, because that's.
Exactly right. Exactly right, so.
Well, I didn't think, didn't plan on coming up with anything tonight, just wanted to start the conversation a bit, and say, hey, you know, this is a, won't be an ongoing conversation for a while, so I was, I wanted to, anybody else have any?
Well, I'm taking, you know, I'm taking two action items away, you know, if I wasn't married, that, I'd meet with the schools and meet with MU to make sure we at least had that, start that discussion. She's probably done that already, but just to make sure that we're understanding from their side what strategic means, yeah.
And then do we want to take a look at policy one through seven and just kind of?
Yeah, I don't know.
You can send that out.
I mean, I can react, that you all have, you know?
I think that's what made, made it possible, I think, that we did go to the schools, we did go to MU and all of that, so.
I mean, champion win for everybody, or, for the dollar.
Well, the schools don't get a five year warranty, so.
Well, there's multiple changes that came through that with COVID coming in, you know, right now, what's, what are the schools gonna do when it comes to learning? You know, how much you have to continue to be virtual, you know?
Not as much, I've talked to that, we don't listen a lot, I'm familiar with that. She found that face to face was so much better for the student, and that a lot of kids are gonna be coming back this year. It's not gonna be, oh, this was great, let's just stay virtual, she didn't see that as a plus for the students.
All right? Why are you responding for me?
So, uh, we, we had a little bit, you know, traffic on this. This all started because in the downtown district, um, downtown businesses were interested in a monument sign at the intersection of Main Street and Zeller. And, uh, pre-COVID, we've been working on it, and agreed upon a design, and then we were in the midst of fundraising for that design. And, uh, COVID happened, so it sort of derailed. So we resumed our downtown business meetings last month and started talking about the sign again. And, uh, in a conversation with mayor, uh, we were talking about the fact that, you know, we've got this downtown signage that's important, right? To public, to downtown. But really, um, it would be nice to get better signage, connecting people who might be at Toyota Field to, you know, get to downtown and vice versa, that type of thing. And so, um, systematic programs like that, where you're trying to direct people and attract them by your way, it's called wayfinding. And these are just examples, I pulled off of the internet, it showed you kind of, this slide shows you kind of a range of different signage, right? So you can have, um, street signage, you can have, uh, parking identification signage, you can have signage that identifies the library, city hall, where the parks are. And it can be a different junction points, um, in your community. Uh, the, this, um, image, the one top left there is Huntsville signage for its downtown. And if you've been in downtown Huntsville, you probably will recognize some of the signage, it's very well done in my opinion. Uh, this was downtown firm in Virginia. Um, the image at the bottom, and I realize it's a lot of creation, but it's small, this is Corvatar signage. And this is a really broad range of signage, right? And again, this is for the entire city, not necessarily just the downtown. But hopefully between this slide and the previous one, you get a sense that it can really be what you wanted to use, right? You could do wayfinding that is concentrated on the downtown and, and, uh, and a couple of other points. So it doesn't have to be a tremendous effort. So after talking with the mayor, I kind of, uh, did some research, um, about trying to find firms that do this. And it turns out that the firm that did Corvatar signage is located in Decatur, in Moncombe. So I reached out to them and asked them for a proposal. Um, so the first phase of, um, this kind of effort is what they call the signage product, where you're gonna go through Madison as kind of a, um, an outsider, if you will, to look and see, you know, where does it make sense to put signage? You know, where are there opportunities for signage, what points are the interests we want to connect people to, and that type of thing. We can certainly do a lot of that at staff, um, but there's value attached in someone who's really not that familiar with the city, even trying and finding a way around. And where do those signs really need to be? And there's, and as you can see from both of these images, there's different kinds of signs, right? And so, you know, on Hughes Road, we might have, you know, one kind of sign to direct people away from that, and that's gonna be a different sign to communicate, so the historic district versus Toyota Field, et cetera. Um, so the phase one is, um, basically the product that we get is a description of that different mix of signs and, and images. So that bottom graphic that you see would be something similar to that, um, a map of where the location should be located, and then the content for each sign phase. So what might be, we'd be talking about, are we talking about parking, are we talking about city facilities, are we talking about parks? And what, um, and what facilities would we want to, you know, senior center, et cetera. Um, and so that first phase is about a not too significant capacity hours. Um, subsequent phases with, uh, phase two, you actually get into the actual design of the sign. So in the Huntsville example, um, you know, their three lane near signage is the river that runs through downtown Huntsville, right? And, um, some of these, um, I guess one is that little flower, so wherever, um, Huntsville is, um, the one, the Virginia Blue Ridge is kind of got this mountain, kind of, um, white iron, you can see sort of the looks of mountains at the top. So there's a specific design, when I talked with the owner of the firm, um, he said they definitely will do two to three designs. He didn't want to give me a price because it really depends on what they can figure out, like what kind of signage are we gonna need over here? And getting a sense of what we're gonna do and that type of thing. Um, I would expect the phase two would be at least ten thousand dollars, right? To kind of figure out, uh, designs maybe it would be. Um, and then you get into phase three, which is application, which, you know, really depends upon nature of the size. So we have money in our department and apartment budget, uh, we have two different line items, um, we have special projects line item. And in our current, um, budget, we definitely have enough money to cover that. We have put money in our special projects, um, to do a fiscal analysis, if, um, the farms project presented an opportunity, and frankly, I don't see that happening in this fiscal year. Um, and so we could use that, and we also have money in our, um, our economic development fund. We've not been going to conferences because of COVID and, and so we have money from that. And so we have enough money in our existing budget to cover phase one. Um, they said it would probably need, they're very busy, but, you know, probably about a month, a half, or, or we might even be able to do phase two within this next year. And, uh, our budget would be wanting to go forward. That's what I'm.
Should, should we put something for phase three in the budget for next year?
Um, I don't have a good sense of cost of that, I, I know signs can be expensive. And so I would want to figure out what a phase two, I mean, it would be great if we could do phase one and phase two before the budget has to be done. And then it might be, it might not go in the planning apartment budget, and the public works might be able to do some of the signage. They're pretty limited in what they can produce, but we can certainly look at that. Um, so I don't, I don't, I don't have a number for you on that. But, yeah, it would be great to be able to complete some signage budget in the next year's budget. The other thing I would add, and I, I did, um, mention was, you know, we've got the existing monument sign at Hughes and Madison Boulevard, which is very attractive. So I would think that any kind of design, if you want to try and build on that. Uh, my concern is giving the Huntsville's, you know, main sign that's got the rock on the bottom, we don't want it to be matchy matchy, or we're like, we're trying to copy them. But we already got this, you know, one monument sign, so I could definitely see.
I should say they weren't matchy matchy times.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know which capers, so.
The egg.
I think are the capers.
The egg capers.
So. We also have the park sign.
I'm sorry?
The greenway sign.
Yeah, there's the greenway signage, yeah. Um, and so it's if they take all of that into account, right, in terms of the thematic design. So I just want to mention that existing sign, you know, you can certainly build on that. And thinking about the downtown, for example, the monument sign that we had at Hughes and May, um, Madison, that's way too big and massive and clunky. It wouldn't work at all in downtown. I mean, you might have something that's.
Miniature version.
Right.
Clunky, hey, I'm calling, that's not clunky.
I'm sorry, clunky downtown, it's very.
I'm guilty of that.
Did I not, did I not compliment the sign?
I call it clunky.
It's large, it is out of town. It's far from downtown.
It would be out of town.
Substantial.
I was.
Clunky.
Would you like?
I thought I was gonna say that.
It's a kitchen and sheen.
You are substantial.
There you go.
It's very attract, very attractive, large sign.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Would not fit into downtown, right? What, you could include others?
There you go.
Hey, just 'cause I represent downtown, I want you to tell you, we don't want a sign like that now.
Well, I wouldn't build you one.
He doesn't do clunk downtown.
Yeah, correct. Clunky stuff don't fit down.
Right, we don't want clunk.
So, I mean, that, using that sign, you know, that would be expensive to do in lots of different places, much.
Good job, correct.
I got one there. So, um, what you could do, you know, some of these pole signs, for example, you know, for a lesser price, right? In other areas, right? So it's going to be something that you would face in over time. You're not gonna be able to buy and put in all the signage in your one, I wouldn't expect the city to have the budget to do that. But you can kind of figure out what your key things are, right? Downtown connectivity, um, and, and sort of build on that.
So those poles that we have downtown, um, you know, the, I guess they're light poles and you can hang sound on them as well?
Yes, and so tho- those.
I would not recommend those, they're, they're extremely expensive when they get back to the table.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're hard to store.
But the reason that, um, you know, those have been selected, um, before I got here, but they have a groove in them. And so you can actually very easily mount signs into those poles. So it actually could save you money because you don't have to put in a separate pole for the sign, you can stick your sign on a pole.
Just put a pole there, a pole, it's like vaccine.
But they are expensive, you're right.
We, we have to, we've, I think we have two.
We have, uh, one.
One leg?
We have one street sign and one, one light pole, I think it was, stop sign, I think is what we have. Yeah, we can buy a little extra. But we've taken care of that, that one corner, which was problematic, it lies at Main Street.
Oh, no, I'm, it's just, it's just, you know, key and fixed for others.
Yeah. So if, um, you know, obviously we, if you go down this road, uh, we can, we figure out the, the second phase for the design, you know? Getting, you know, policy said, and quote this to that design, you know, show them the designs, he said it's difficult to do two or three designs and, and, um, maybe it's, give them some input, you know, at the beginning, so, um, something to draw.
And it wouldn't be limited to just downtown, we could also have it at the community center, the library.
The, the point of this would be a citywide, you know, having a consistent, um, image, being, so.
Do you have an idea of where you want to put those, for instance, would you want to get Maggiore, would you want to get to the field, would it be the library, would it be?
Gringle Mountain, um, you know, Senior Center, the stadium, the community center.
That question where it is?
Yeah, the football stadium, um, city hall, I mean, you know, civic buildings are, I would vote for it. Hospital, Palmer's Park, Dublin Park. I, you know, I think for Madison, it would be the greenways, um, it's not gonna be that complicated, you know, we also don't have that many arterials. And so it would be, in some ways, it's pretty easy. So thumbs up, should we go forward?
I like it.
I like it.
I still don't, she puts some money in next year's budget for, I mean, I, I don't know a number, right?
I know, I would just, have to, yeah, but it needs to be.
It's gonna be your finance chair on that, we're still. We're gonna put it in, I mean, she's gonna have it for one, we'll, we'll have it in there for two, it's just.
No, I don't have a problem spending money, I just.
Oh, I understand.
I guess I would want to give you.
I like that when you save money and spend, that's what I'm.
I do, that's what's right for, but I, um, but I would want to kind of give you a real number of, you know, what, what you might get for, you know, fifty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars or whatever.
Sure, if, I'm just saying, and we don't necessarily have to start downtown either, I mean, I, I think the first place we're gonna start would be the stadium. That's just a mental, I know you've done a lot of work, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, and, and also just talking, it's the stadium or the baseball field, you know, town Madison's got its signage plan, you know? And so that's something that we would want to take, it's not like we're gonna put our signs necessarily there. But, you know, there's a sign on Waltrana, and as you're coming north on Waltrana, after the ramp, it's, you know, a little black sign from the historic district right there. A lot of people drive by it, it's a script, it's hard to read, those signs drive me crazy, you know? And, but that would be a location, right? As you're coming off Toyota Field, hey, we've got our historic district right there.
And with that easy, it, it sticks out when you go to a place like Huntsville or haven't been to Decatur, and you can, you come over the bridge, or you come down the ramp, and you, I mean, it just sticks out the way you should go, and there are three or four main things that are real close to that area.
There are a lot of cities, like Monta Valley, one of the, at the conference, one of the, that were one of the cities that talked about their signage and their way, wayfinding throughout town. And they had a program similar to this, but it's, it's the way cities are going to help people flow through their city and attract people to areas that might be, um, overloaded.
It's, it's, it gets into branding as well, right?
So you think it's valid, I mean, should we take, if we're gonna redo the signs and stuff, I mean, should we take the one down that's down here on Hughes and Ice Boulevard, redo it?
We just stacked every that big, expensive.
That big is a clunky sign.
We're moving on.
Yeah, rock by rock, Teddy, you do it. Rock by rock, we're in your way.
It's a very attractive sign.
They said gotta.
When they change the paint color, that helps a lot.
Right, I was told that before.
Yeah, she got rid of it now.
Appreciate it, right? Anybody else have any questions? From Mary Beth? But thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, you're up, talking about trash.
All right. All right, so.
It's basic trash.
Everybody's got a little window with, like, you know? Um, everybody's got a little window with the current bulk trash collection rates for people in the Huntsville Utility Service Area, and people in the Adams Utility Service Area, and then you'll also have a copy of the bid tab for the recent bulk trash bid. So if you recall, a few months ago, we came to y'all and we asked for a change order at Republic Services, request, and Republic Services, of course, the bulk trash contractor, collecting all the so-called white waste of the city, so that yard waste, appliances, all that kind of bigger stuff that won't go into our bulk garbage tracking. So we entered into a new agreement with them in two thousand seventeen, after a really extensive bid process. Um, this year they came back to us and said that the low price that they were already charging was just not keeping up with all of the expenses that they had, and given the COVID year, the trash loads had actually increased over the year. And so, uh, we considered their proposal, and we told them, okay, we can give you, you know, this increased pricing for a while, and that they were insisting, uh, and asking to please re-bid the contract, and we're like, okay, but we got to give lots of contractors a chance, like, it's not a lock for you, just ask for it. Uh, so we went up to them. Uh, so we went up to bid, um, after going through the change order process. And we reached out, first of all, to a number of other cities of comparable size to Madison to see how they handled this and do their contracting for us, so we could know when we reach out to them, ask them to bid. What we found out was that most cities of Madison size actually have their own sanitation departments. So we kind of ran into a bid in there. When we got into the bid process, there were a few other contractors that were interested, um, but Republic ended up being the only bidder. Um, there was one other contractor that was very interested, but they had just gotten a big contract with Jefferson County. So we were trying to just offer them to be able to start another beach contract like this. And as you recall, as we discussed a few years ago, it takes a lot of lead-up time for these contractors to get everything ready, get the number of trucks and manpower and all of that to be able to service Madison, because this is a really big contract. So when we opened the bid, the rate came in at thirteen dollars and fifteen cents per household. Right now it's at eight ninety-eight. So that was a pretty big jump. Um, as you see, the current rate is eight dollars and ninety-eight cents from the contractor. But there's also a utility billing service fee for both Athens and Huntsville Utilities, uh, depending on what service area you're in. So the cost is a little bit more for a household to absorb that because the utilities collect the fees and they pass them through to the contractor, is how this contract works. So, um, given that we only have the one bidder, we started to negotiate with them because that's allowed when you just have the one bidder. And they're not willing to go below twelve seventy at this point. So that's the proposal that we're at. And in talking with the mayor about it, we're like, that's pretty steep because you, as you can see, the price is gonna escalate quite a bit over the next, you know, thirty to six years. It's an initial free term contract, but there is an option to renew. They've asked for an increase in the escalation rate, which is currently three percent to up to four percent. And so this is what we're showing you in this graph. And you can see that it's gonna go, um, up to sixteen dollars by twenty, twenty-six, sixteen bucks per household, so, um, per month. So that's pretty hefty compared to what residents have been paying. And when the mayor and I talked about this after doing the latest proposal from Republic, he was like, you know, I'm not ready to recommend this at this point. Uh, let's see what Huntsville thinks. So that's what we're doing tonight, is just giving you the numbers, getting any thoughts. If you have any questions, so the contractor, I'll re-talk to them. We didn't know we were recommending this tonight till a year or two ago, so they couldn't take it tonight. But I'm gonna send any questions that you have.
So what's the driver? So from this break-off double, almost double from eight ninety-eight to sixteen dollars over the next five years, what's the driving force? Is it labor costs? Is it?
Labor gas, um, cost of trucks and maintenance, just a whole range of things is what they're telling us. And increased load. So we don't know, you know, how the load increase will, you know, actually.
Can we put a hundred on it? That it actually, can we somehow quantify that, that it does?
Yeah, and I can get.
Then it goes up at that point, and we only pay if it goes up. But if it doesn't go up, at some point, I think people would get out of crap and throw away.
Get out of the Apple's garage.
But if you're gonna come back down, does that change at all or not change? Or like, can you be dead in? I mean, maybe not.
We, we really wouldn't have risked that because we have issued a draft contract with the bid. So if we were gonna do that, we could, we would just have to rebid it. So the options right now are for y'all to, you know, you know, one, we can keep negotiating with them. Two, y'all can go ahead and award this negotiated bid price and we can bring that to an upcoming council meeting. Or you can reject it, rebid. That's tough because we don't have too many options for bidders, so.
So I remember the term, we voice showed the term and, and maybe look at, look at something, you know, a bit later. I mean, just, I think, how much is the sanitation department cost?
That's what I'm thinking. Well, we're not talking, you have to ask me questions.
We have a landfill right behind West Madison Elementary School, there's a.
No, how much, do we?
Yeah, but we don't necessarily.
I don't have too many details on that. We've run, we've talked with, about, with Kent about that. He has been opposed to that, um, but it wouldn't necessarily follow to, we don't have. So that's not, if you want us to go out and get more information on that, we'll do that.
I think so, man, just, I think we should at least ask the question, I'm not.
What, what does a contract end? Like, when do we have to make?
Well, this contract technically ends in February at this point. And we've told.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Okay, that's the latest, but the thing is with this, I mean, there's so much lead-up time involved. We gotta get going on it, and it's, and it's a tough situation.
We have thirty-seven, they have forty-four. We have thirty-seven.
Oh, they lined up the words.
Yesterday, of course.
Yesterday. And we told them, you know, if we got, this coming year, they want October. So we, we kind of told them, like, if you guys, if the bid process works out and you're, and you're pretty well equipped, then we can talk about, you know, either letting you guys know, uh, around that timeline, so you can pursue something else. Or, you know, we'll go ahead and maybe we'll all around that time, right? But that's kind of uncertain, contracts itself, and it's a bit, it's just that there's so much involved in this. You know, the county potentially could be an option, but it'd be a huge thing for them to take on. And apparently they only service once a month in the county area. This is once a week. And so when, when we talked to the Republic about that, they were like, hey, that's, y'all have a lot of trash disposal every weekend. We couldn't really get my hide, so.
I, I would say that.
Get my trash.
This, yeah. This is, this is the number one complaint I get on email is bulk trash. They only picked up part of it, they missed me, you know, all that. I mean, I can't tell you how many times over four years I've called them and said, hey, can you hit Longbow and Park Meadow again? And I guess my feeling is if Republic was outstanding and, and worth it, and then doing a great job for the customer.
Forty-nine thousand dollars they do get.
Yeah.
I mean, you can say, I mean, they're not perfect.
Well, I know, I mean, I was saying.
Somebody puts out, you're supposed to put literally an F-150 bid.
Right, it's like eight two dig yards.
Like a whole frickin' house worth of crap. And it's like, okay.
And a lot of people don't put that for cash. And they call and go, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't get it. We gotta give it out in the line.
And there are a lot of people. You know, you don't have good ground, so.
Hey, here's, here's reality, guys, we can get a lot of things, and we get a lot of things wrong. If you get trash wrong, I promise you, people will knock down your doors.
Right. And if the Republic gets it wrong, if you have a. I remember all the two recent price increases that we had, which came from the utility billing fee and then also the recent price increase. So with this one, I mean.
What are you gonna say? Well, we have one bidder.
I know.
What are you gonna do? I mean, what are you, okay, we can get it, don't pay it.
So, I mean, it's a chance Jefferson County will be online.
But at four dollars, what else could you carry for four dollars?
That's good.
Better me, dude, cost me a lot more than that.
Ms. Beatty says it's worth it, so.
I mean, we have to have. I'm just wondering.
You're done, you're telling me.
Electric bill, some electric bill.
When did we contact the, or when did Jefferson County contact us and say that they're out? They just.
They just didn't.
Okay. Okay, so do you think maybe by the fall, we could have, we're coming out of COVID, things are moving along better, we might have more bidders? I mean, it's, it doesn't.
The thing is, is if, if they got to buy more trucks and our mortgage, go get them all trained and start, and get their CBL licenses and all that other stuff, are they gonna have time between the fall and February to do all of that? That's.
What I heard you say is that you need five months to.
So that, that's all.
It depends, because, you know, we heard from Kent that we need to have trucks now, you know, and all the supply shortages around, it could be, yeah. So it's.
They want a little microchip. I got two, how long, they want a five-year contract, is what they want?
They want a three-year with option to renew for subsequent point-three-year terms. And that's actually a bid law exception that for these types of contracts, you could go beyond the standard three-year term. So there's potential that they could stay around a mutual agreement, you know, after this three-year term and then for successive ones.
Well, we could renew for the three years.
Three, one year?
And in the meantime, look into what it would take if we decided to stand up our own sanitation department.
Ignore it and then we could be studying that. Yes.
Wonderful time. Blackmail out. It's, it's, it's hard. If you tie, you tie some of these rates to some of their indirect rates, so, you know, based off of how much, how much you pay for gas, how much you're gonna position that. Now, wait, if their costs go up, then they get additional costs. But if their costs go down, they get, you know, they get paid based on what those costs are, not necessarily, I mean, it's not fair for the price. All of a sudden, the bottom drops out, you're making like a hundred percent profit.
We met with, um, several of us, the development, the mayor and engineering building, I, we met with the Home Builders Association, um, I guess it was a week ago. Uh, we can have a go. And, um, it's not only home builders, it's people in the trade, you know, people who provide electricians and everything. While this isn't trash disposal, you know, they all went around and talked to us about the price increases, the difficult, the lead time to get tires, to, um, get drivers, um, the fact that the trucking industry as a whole is so far behind because it, across the country, because they cannot get enough drivers. And so I, I would expect that all of those factors, um, are leading into that price increase, not to defend it per se, but the price increases were, um, really dramatic. I mean, you know, fifty percent increases in certain kinds of things. And, um, and I think it's going to affect all aspects of, you know, the industry. I don't think it's gonna go long for our region anytime soon. It may not have any supply chain issues, you know, to get better out of COVID. There's certainly expecting to be active labor problems for the first year.
Yeah, I just forgot, man, at this point, you've got a huge left off, left off there. But there's no way contract, uh, contract laws to tie it to indirect rights and all these other, other things that go into that as, into that rate.
We would have to rebid it and it would have to be very, um, it would be a pretty complicated, um, way too drastic agreement.
And then why would you bid on it? And you're a contractor, why would you bid that?
I'd be concerned from a city's perspective, it's like getting an adjustable rate mortgage. Why would you ever do that if you don't have to? I mean, it's much better than a public thing, same point, to have a fixed mortgage, right? To have a fixed price, because prices are gonna continue to escalate. So, I mean, depending on what you start as your base, right? If you're gonna agree to a lower base, then it could work with the city's favor.
So Republic is the only game in town at this point?
Um, how?
Garbage trucks, you know, guardrails, that's what we need.
When do, um, when is optimal time for us to make this? Not from Public's opinion, your opinion on when do we need to seriously consider this vote?
With the next one, I would say we need to consider, um, considering it's possible because we have to know how to, and, um, and we need to, we open and enter. I need to say, we're in about sixty days and we're all actively into that, just based on the time.
So probably by the, the first meeting in July, we need, by then, we need to decide, have a vote. Okay.
Yeah, before the proposal, the price is going value, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I was, the first meeting in July, we should still be okay. But, um.
I think it's, um, y'all just want more time to figure out it, for us to do a little bit of extra research?
Let's scratch your head on it. And just tell them, just, I, I think you can have them go put it on the agenda for the first meeting in July. And then just to let them know, hey, we'll, we'll have an extra meeting. Is that, is that all I can do there? Like, let's throw this in a bit.
Okay, got it.
Tell them, tell them all you have time, we're gonna tell everybody in the city.
All right.
Think everybody, like, during COVID.
Whatever else you got.
Very good. Any other questions about clunky garbage cans? All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. You can email me if y'all have any.
Thank you.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
Any miscellaneous? Business council racing may be necessary?
We just call the trash.
Can I mention something?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you were talking about roads and you know I talk about traffic all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Today was a busy day, I was out. Uh, uh, here's, now we're talking about all the roads going north and south was screwed up today.
There's no doubt.
Uh, this one, you were battling one-way traffic, so I mean, well, just one road, not two lanes, and barrels. Walt Trianna was stopped up, backed up twenty, thirty cars, uh, down here at the school.
Park Meadow got through.
Sullivan was screwed up. They're working on, uh, uh, Boll's, I don't, I don't know, I didn't go that way, but their barrels all over creation.
It's the roundabout.
Why they're gonna do the roundabout. There's not a road in this town going north and west that is worth driving on.
That's what they're working on.
Yep, exactly.
Well, you know, I go to Huntsville every two weeks. And every now and then, when I go, I see where a road has been paved. It's unreal. They get things done. They get it done in a timely manner. This road out here has been a mess for two years. I mean, I'm just saying that, that all north and south roads were just screwed up today, big time.
Yeah, I called over too.
I know, it should probably have. I mean, it's, it's okay, but not all of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I had to cut over.
My answer's been.
I cut over into another.
My, my answer's been, people complain if we don't do the roads. And now people are complaining if you do the roads. It's like we can't win for losing. We're trying to make it better.
But you don't stop, you don't block them all.
Says, if you want an omelet, you gotta break a few eggs. So you want great roads, it takes.
I think the key point is don't block all of the north-south.
Don't all of them, all of them at once. And, 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 because I'm off right off of Walt Trianna and then I thought about going to Boll's. But then I think, uh, you gotta go to Boll's where there's a light. There's not a light on Boll's.
Conversation with, when all this happened, when we were bidding these out and the whole reason we, that they're all being done at one time, so it didn't get contracted. Because what was happening is, I mean, I would have heard this on Martin Road, they, they were doing Martin Road. And we had, we had a penalty in there, but they didn't finish for a certain time, that they would pay us X dollar.
Oh, yeah, we've had them like that.
Yeah, but it, it was more, it was more feasible and more profitable for them to go do roads somewhere else and take them. So that's, that's one.
I'm just saying, all of them. They don't block them all.
Band-aid, it hurts, so you just pull it all off real quickly.
Yeah, but you just, you know, I had to go to a meeting, I had a meeting at a certain time, and I had to cut through, bank one. And you had to cut through, but then you cut through and then get away and dodging cones and barrels and. No left turns, all kind of mess. Anyway, just thought I'd say that, I hope it's gonna be better tomorrow.
But you can show piss everybody off.
I'll be glad when they're done.
That's, that's what you're doing. Yeah, that's what you're doing. Y'all have anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, let's get it.